We're gonna go ahead and get our meeting started. Councilwoman Harris, will you give us our prayer? Councilman Crone, will you give us our pledge?
We need some prayer.
We shall do. Lord, we're coming for you this afternoon, oh God, with our hearts heavy and lifting up to you, oh God. There's so much going on among us, oh God. Lord, we thank you right now for your love and kindness and your tender mercy, oh God. But Lord, we ask you to bind the devil in our city. Bind the devil among us. Bind the devil in the city hall, oh God. Lord, we just wanna bind them all over, God. You said, "Let you arise and our enemies will scatter." So, Lord God, we want you to rise and the enemies be scattered. We thank you right now, oh God, for your love and kindness and your tender mercy. You've been so good and you've been so kind. We bless your holy name, oh God. Cover us with your blood. Lift us with your love. Let that love run from heart to heart and breast to breast. Save him, the council, Lord. Save him, oh God. Fill him with your Holy Spirit. Let your word dwell in them, oh God. Oh Lord, you do it right now, oh God. Glory to your name, Jesus. Turn their minds toward you, oh God. Glory to your name, Lord. We bless you right now, oh God. We bless you right now, oh God. Lord, I bless your holy name, 'cause you've been good, oh God, and you've been so kind. We've been through so much, oh God. The NAMAs is down from COVID, oh God, and they still raising sand. But Lord, I give you glory right now to bind the devil, Lord, and wrap us in your love and cover us with your blood, oh God. Let your word go forth. Let your spirit dwell in here right now, God. Cover this place, oh God. Fill this place, oh God. Rock it, oh God, in the name of Jesus. Now, thank you right now, Lord, for what you're doing and what you're gonna do, oh God. 'Cause, Lord, you is our master, and there's no one else but you. And we're gonna let you be God. Ain't nobody God but you. So, Lord, you choose who you want, and we thank you right now, God, in Jesus' name I pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Let us face the flag, please, for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, poor, which is saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I'm gonna call this meeting order. Will you please call the roll?
Mayor Clinton.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Suter.
Here.
Councilmember Bruce.
Yeah.
Councilmember Cat.
Here.
Councilmember Crone.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Hope.
Here.
Councilmember Hudson.
Here.
Councilmember Mohammed. Councilmember Monday.
Yes.
Councilmember Murray.
Here.
Councilmember Wheeler.
Here.
We got 10 of the 10 here present, so we do have a quorum. I'm gonna move to the bid openings. Westminster Utility Pump Station Number Three and Pump Station Number Four, Rehabilitation and Common Forest Main. Can I get a motion in second to refer that back to the proper, to the minister? Can I get a second?
Second.
Ms. Stewart, you get that more second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Those being, so I refer it back.
Mayor, could I get, could I ask for Todd Peterson to come up just for a minute?
Sure.
That's a minute.
I got you, really, I got you. Let me ask you.
Got to lighten the mood a little bit, huh?
Let me ask if, do you have like a time that this project's gonna take place and like when you think you might start it?
What I've done is actually right now, if you look at the bids, there's a pretty big discrepancy on the bids. So, we're actually reviewing the two bids that we did receive pretty closely. But we have a special call meeting of my commission next Tuesday to go ahead and get that. If we have the engineer and ourselves, we're reviewing those bids as we speak 'cause of the huge difference between the two numbers. So, next Tuesday, we will be, if everything works out the way we hope, we're gonna be accepting the low bid next Tuesday, and then we'll be starting the process of getting contracts together. I'm not gonna give you a timeframe on when we'll be able to start, 'cause as y'all know, supply chain and product availability is a whole nother ballgame. So, we are hoping to have that project done, though, by the end of this year.
What do you think the disruption will be in the neighborhoods? Do you think it will be just minor disruptions?
Correct, minor disruptions. Most of this work will be done along the 10-mile bayou, most of that forest main that is being done. And then we will be doing the pump stations once the forest main is built. So, potentially some street construction done through there along the Lear Street, from, goodness, about Bow Four down to, I'll call it, is it Ross where that ties down into? There could be some potential street issues down in that area. Depending on how the contractor chooses to do the work, if he plans on open cutting the work or if he plans on boring it, will be a whole lot less disruptions. That's gonna be a choice on the contractor.
Anybody got any other questions or any questions?
Other than the prices are higher than we originally budgeted?
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, they are, every day. Figuring out how to pinch some pennies.
This is just one aspect of the overall plan that we have.
That's exactly right. As y'all know, this is all part of that original, we're under the administrative order from ADQ. This is something that, you know, I'm gonna just say has, we're right now under administrative order to get done, and I can tell you, it's hurting me with the cost increases and with COVID and supply chain and everything else. So, we're continuing to evaluate that and address all those issues. And we've already started, on that note, talking about potentially, once we start to do the wastewater treatment plant, if we have to go to ADQ and maybe look for an extension, looking at delivery of equipment. So, we're gonna make sure we're on top of that if we have to ask for an extension. As y'all know, we have to be in compliance by December 31st of 2023.
And there's no ifs, ands, buts. We need to control our own destiny and not allow them to come in.
That is correct. We need to be doing what we need to do to make sure we get the work done. But as I think everybody understands, we think everybody would be in consideration or understanding of what we're dealing with in today's environment.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you, Todd. Our next item of business is our minutes. Councilman Cat has given me some corrections.
Make a motion to suspend the rules in second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? It's approved. We had no old business. We got two new items, a new business. Would you all want to read those by title only?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we read R1 and O1. To suspend the rules and read R1 and O1 by title only.
I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Ms. Attorney?
R1 is a resolution naming the new West Memphis Fire Department Training Facility, the Eason Lang Training Facility of West Memphis.
I get a motion in second to approve.
So moved.
Second.
In discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? That passes. Will you give the resolution number, Ms. Clerk?
Okay, that's gonna be 2207. 2207.
2207. 22.
2270.
That number is 2270. That's the resolution number. Congratulations to our Westminster Fire Department. Thank you all. And while I got you here, I do wanna, will you stand up for me, Chief Robert May? This is our new training officer right here for City of Westminster.
Congratulations.
Yep, congratulations.
All right. City Attorney, will you do O1, please?
O1 is an ordinance waiving competitive bidding for the purchase of body cameras for the West Memphis Police Department to be provided by Motorola Solutions and authorizing the mayor to sign the master customer agreement and for other purposes.
Can I get a motion to further suspend the rules and place it on the second reading?
So moved.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding for the purchase of body cameras for the West Memphis Police Department to be provided by Motorola Solutions and authorizing the mayor to sign the master customer agreement and for other purposes.
My foot.
Yeah, Mayor, make a motion that we further suspend the rules and place it on its third and final reading. Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding for the purchase of body cameras for the West Memphis Police Department to be provided by Motorola Solutions and authorizing the mayor to sign the master customer agreement and for other purposes.
I get a motion in a second to approve.
So moved.
Second.
In discussion? I think it's gonna.
I have a question, ma'am.
Sure, Dr. Bruce.
How many cameras will we be getting?
Well, all the.
We know, I don't know the number.
I know that all the patrolmen that would be out in the street would have body cameras on.
Okay.
Do you wanna answer that, Joel?
Will we purchase any extras so if something goes wrong with the cameras?
What'd he say?
Will we have any extras?
Extras? I'm gonna have Joel Johnson come up. He knows more about the numbers and how many cameras we have, and he's gonna come up and speak just for a second, if you would. Dr. Bruce?
Okay.
Yes, sir. We are purchasing 24 body cameras. This would set up to have 12 in operation and 12 being charged, and there'll be two other sets. So, we're purchasing a total of 26, so there'd be two cameras in case of damage or loss or such that.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Joel, does that come with a maintenance agreement so that?
They.
I'm just asking, I did, you know, this topic's come up a year ago, so.
Yes, sir. We have a maintenance agreement with Motorola. When it comes to the body cameras, those are kind of a new area. We may have to expand our service agreement, but that has not been approached yet. We have, I believe, a three-year warranty on the cameras.
Okay.
Thank you, Joel.
Sir.
Let me ask you something real quick.
Sir.
Will these phones, if we buy these phones and say we updated our system later on, will they modify into a new system?
The body cameras themselves are actually a self-contained unit. They operate both as a body camera as well as working with the car cameras. We have, we will have, part of this arrangement is an active server, which will restore, I'm sorry, which will store all of the footage that comes in. So, it is relatively a self-contained unit. This is, the body cameras we're getting are their newest generation, so if something changes in the year, we would have, you know, we would, of course, have to re-approach the years to come. All right. Sir.
So, the price is still set at 89?
Yes, sir. We discussed, I had a meeting or had a conversation with them. I told them that it was imperative that we come in under a certain number. They assured us that they could. The biggest problem, as what Todd said, the biggest problem we're facing right now is supply issues. It is going to be, hopefully, we'll be able to get them in a timely manner. But we, the project itself should still come in under what we've set as our budget.
Okay. I was just curious because it is, but that was initially.
We received.
Almost a year old.
Yes, sir. We actually have an updated, we actually have an updated quote, and that quote is still underneath what was, what we recited as our budget. So, we should still be good to go with this.
Okay.
Thank you. Also, would you all approve of this? This is gonna do one great thing for our city, and that's to bring our police and our community together to make sure that our officers are, make sure they taking care of the people of our community as well as the people of our community are being honest on our officers. So, it's gonna be great for all of us, so. Can I get a motion to approve? I mean, I got a motion to approve, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? It's passed. Will you give that ordinance, I'm sorry, a number?
2600. 2600.
2600. All right. Let me get a motion in second to add to the agenda the three items of the ARPA money. I got to do them individually, which is the economic.
Mayor, I hate to interrupt you, but since the one that I brought would not be discussed, can I just ask Mr. Boner, let him know why we're not adding it? Because he's here thinking that we are.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, and then I'm not disrespecting you, but just, Mr. Boner, we discovered that for the information that we have on the downstairs, there is an ordinance already in place with the race on there. We're gonna have to take that ordinance and amend it with the race that we have on here, and we'll have to bring this back at another time. And thank you so much for coming. Did you have anything to say? Thank you so much. We'll get that taken care of. Thank you, Mayor Clinton.
All right, thank you. We have, I have four items that I need to add. The first one would be the $2 million ads for the economic development project, as well as $2 million for the broadband internet service, and $2 million for the 8-win public safety service, and one for MPO ordinance that, I mean, resolution that the City Attorney has already looked over. It just got to sign, and I need you all's permission to sign it. And I thank you all. You all have a copy of that. And so, can I get a motion? And for 15, I'm gonna give some of my charity money away, so just want you all to add that too. I think Councilman Monday wanna get some of his charity money away as well. Anyone else wanna get in that charity money, give it away that you have? But those are five things I'm asking you to add to the agenda. Can I get a motion in second to add those to the agenda?
So moved.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? There are eight of them. First, let me say, City Council, I'm going to ask you for a little of your time to fully explain what I'm placing before you. During the last three years, I have placed several projects before you for your consideration. With each project, my staff and I have done our due diligence to make sure that you see that the projects that we can afford. And with each project, we have done some historic things in the City of Westminster in public safety, job creation, quality of life, eliminating black during this pandemic, and so on. Yesterday, in our two-hour work session, I placed before you three projects. As with every other project that I have asked you to consider, these are projects that I believe are good for the City of Westminster. In fact, I believe that they are great for the City of Westminster. We have been blessed with some one-time funds from the ARPA money. These projects have been well-vetted, and they met the criteria for this money. These funds aren't coming from, they are not coming from the general fund. No money coming from the general fund. They are federal dollars, and these projects meet the criteria for their usage. I need your support and your vote to pass it. The first thing is economic development. First, I want to discuss the immediate need that we have to put in the infrastructure. I'm referring to the water and sewer at our 1,800-acre mega site on the west end of the city, on I-40. This investment from these funds is $2 million. This investment will position us to land large industrial projects. Our economic development team has been doing everything necessary to get this site shovel-ready. This investment is the next essential step. When you vote for this investment, you will literally be placing the city in the best possible position to land a large economic development project, perhaps the largest in our history of our city. Just within the last few months, you have seen what Memphis and also Ola has done. You saw what happened when local government step up and take bold actions. Great things happen for the city and region that will have a positive impact on our economy for decades. If you are concerned about economic development, job creation, and impacting generational property, this vote can do that. So, Philip, will you come forward? And you all can ask Philip anything you need to ask someone for this first $2 million, they're dealing with economic development.
Is it $2 million?
$2 million. It's a $2 million ad for economic development. And let me say, we got $6 million. Tori had to have this dispersed by April 1st and these projects.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. I appreciate your consideration of this $2 million request of the ARPA funds. Mayor, you define the project probably better than I can at this point, but essentially what we're asking is for the $2 million to extend the water sewer to the I-40 mega site. And I wanna thank you all for all your past support. You all have helped us on every request to allow us to develop this certified mega site. It's the largest certified site in the state and one of the largest in the region. And that's due to the support that you all have provided over the years in helping us do the due diligence that we need. Well, now, we're seeing projects out there. We're gaining traction, a lot of interest in the area. We've got several active projects working out there, and having water out there in a timely manner is critical for us to land one of these large projects. And again, the site was set up for large projects. That's the name, the mega site. So, with that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have related to the request.
Philip, can you speak sort of on how important it is that already have water and sewers to that area when it comes down to attracting?
Well, it's, yeah, it's a timing issue. And, you know, nowadays, when you compete for these large projects, once they make a decision and select the site, they want to be able to go. They don't want to sit back and wait for you to go out and do environmental work, cultural resources surveys, and trust that you're gonna get water to them when they need it. The water is the most critical point for us at, because you need water for construction. When you develop large sites, you need construction water. The sewer, it's not quite as critical to have it out there from day one of construction, but that takes a little longer to construct. Therefore, the further we can get closer to narrowing that timing down so that the company knows that they won't be sitting out there delayed because the utility hasn't gotten water, sewer, and power to the site. So, that's.
Philip, two questions.
Yes, sir.
Is there, down Highway 70, there's no water down the south side of Highway 70?
There is a small three-inch water line Midway Water has out there. Along Highway 147, there's another three-inch water line that City of Crawfordsville has. And we, when the questions came up most recently with the site visit that we had out there, they wanted to know where they're gonna get the construction water. And I have had conversations with Crawfordsville. They're happy to assist us in providing a tap into that three-inch line to provide some temporary water for construction. But as you can imagine, a three-inch water line doesn't provide a whole lot of water. And when you're starting to develop hundreds of acres, that compromise. So, I didn't like the answer when I gave it to them then, but that's the best answer that we could give them at the time because we don't have water out there now for day one. What this would allow us to do is to check that box and move on and let them deal with whatever other issue they may have. And it won't be that, that won't be the problem, the reason that they would eliminate us.
So, my next question would be, once we run the water supply out there and it's available, and then when industry does come in and they have to hook up to that water supply, do they pay for a fee to hook up and all this kinda stuff?
Well, we have in our ordinances and in the utility regulations, there are tapping fees and meter fees based on size and that type of thing. So, yeah, there are some fees associated with it. I can't quote those to you at this point in time, but it varies based on size of meter.
What size line are we taking out there?
Well, initially, we would extend 12-inch. We've got 12-inch just to the west that go north of the interstate. We'd run a 12-inch line out there. Ultimately, we, you know, and again, this is in consultation with Todd and Ward and the utility folks about looping the line so that you've got redundancy and you've got supply coming from two different directions. It'll increase your capacity as well as give you some redundancy. Ultimately, we'd like to put an elevated tank out there. That's not part of what we're asking now, but eventually, you know, we need more. And if you talk to Todd about this and more, they'll tell you that we need more storage capacity in the system, and that would be a good location to add that storage capacity and provide better service in this area. But initially, we just need to get the water to the site. We land one of these projects. Again, these large projects generate a lot of activity and dollars that come in from different sources that, for infrastructure development. Then that will allow us to build off of that.
Councilman Cat?
Again, I'll clarify, make sure I remember it right. Actually, the water is 2.3 million. And, you know, of course, $2 million from the grant, $300,000 from utilities. The sewer at a later date is ballpark estimate around 3.5 million, if I remember correctly.
Those are close numbers. And to be honest with you, they're a little bit higher than what I handed out yesterday, but I'm sure prices have gone up since yesterday on pipe prices. So, the way they're going now, but those are fairly reasonable estimates at this point, yeah.
Any other questions?
Would you like to explain how many jobs we're talking about generating for our region?
Can we, all right. The City Treasurer, you, can we do that? Can we do it in the second session? I don't know if you wanna pick that out.
No, sir, but no, what I'm talking about, we're not talking about our jobs.
No, no, no. You're talking about job numbers that would exceed anything that we've seen, okay?
Exactly.
So, yeah, well, and again, that's the intent. We've got three active projects we're working out there right now. Well, actually, there's more than three, but three that you call really active, and they vary in range for a number of jobs, from very, very large, from large to very large, okay? I'll put it that way.
What you're really talking about is site ready, which that's what they're looking for.
That's it. That's bottom line. That's have the site so-called shovel-ready. That's the term that they all like to use in the site consultant business these days.
Or any other questions? And Mr. Clerk, will you call the roll, each one?
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Bruce?
Yes.
Councilmember Cat?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Hope?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mohammed?
Yes.
Councilmember Monday?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Yes.
Thank you, dear pastors. This is a win for Westminster. Thank you, Council.
I wanna thank you all as well. Do your best, I pledge my ass.
Thank you.
We wanna thank you for doing such a great job for reaching out.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I appreciate y'all.
Secondly, you all know that Ward Wimbush has been running point on our broadband study for the city. We were one of three cities to receive a grant for broadband. The results of that study are in, and they make the convincing case that we should use some of these funds to transform the way that broadband is delivered to our city and our citizens. We can use $2 million of these funds to build a backbone of broadband system that will do spectacular things in the City of Westminster that include running our own system from our city offices. Also, improve our water and wastewater infrastructures through our utilities. This move alone has the potential to save money that we are spending elsewhere, and it gives us a better control of our own destiny. If we do nothing else, it makes sound physical sense to run our own system. However, by creating this broadband infrastructure, we will be installing the foundation to create our own broadband system that will save every citizen that moves over hundreds of dollars annually and even thousands in some cases. We will also be setting ourselves up to provide internet service to our entire county that is very profitable for the City of Westminster. Westminster will soon become a very smart city. This vote supports Westminster. So, Todd, will you come forward? Award?
I'm gonna bring Mr. Todd Warner with me.
On this one. On this one?
As you heard the mayor, I mean, it's pretty understanding. We started out over a year ago, Ward and Dwayne wrote a grant to do a feasibility study of providing broadband to the city. It came back very favorable, that it would be very receptive of our citizens, and I think our citizens would be much appreciated. And it would help the city not only with that potential in the future, but also internally of our own city facilities, our city buildings being able to potentially of the resources we'll be able to tie on to the system. So what we're asking for is actually to start out is improving connectivity to our water and sewer systems, okay, and to our public area sectors, the parks. So one of the things we're looking at is being able to provide Wi-Fi at every city park in the city, so that if our citizens need to, something happens, they can go to a park and sit there and use Wi-Fi and be on a broadband and have that access. Also, improving the system. Once we do that, we then will put ourselves some positions, because the full design will be, everything will be designed out, and we'll be able to then look at the potential of other grants to start helping some of our other citizens that need these services that don't have access to those services. We have not done this yet, but when we were looking at this feasibility study, they actually noticed that a lot of our parks are near schools, so they're actually looking at potentially having somewhere that this broadband Wi-Fi can actually bleed over into some of our schools also, so when they're outside of the buildings, they can potentially have access there. We have not reached out to Mr. Collins yet and just even talked to him, so, you know, that's just something we've, they've noticed, and potentially, again, something again for our community. I can tell you, once you start to develop this, as the mayor said, developing a smart city, everything that you open yourself up, once you have that, those initial systems, to be able to do and the resources, as, you know, Joel came up afterwards in the meeting, says all our Sky cops, if we connect those to fibers, we'll be seeing those things real time back at a location. So you start to open up the possibilities, smart light, streetlights, smart lighting, you know, across the board, you know, there's just, and I think it is the way of the future. I know of several cities that have already started down this road. Clarksville, Arkansas, actually had started this about a year ago. Hope, Arkansas, literally started about a week ago. So it's made, all of your major cities, we have an advantage over most cities because we have an electric system and we're able to do things that they're not able to do because we also have the electric system. Now, Ward, you got anything?
This fits in, as Todd said, under the electrical. We won't, we'd be able to hang the fiber ourselves, so we can do it without any saving costs there. What we're proposing would be like a loop through the city and connects all the utility assets, but in doing so, it's in the community, and then we can, we can work as we get grants to move into the various parts. So it's a great first step, great first stepping stone.
I'm very excited about, because actually, this truly put money back in the citizen's pocket. You know, when you start to move into those communities, you know, you have, we all paying large internet service right now, but once you all start to offer that, you know, people can start to put phone lines on their service, stop paying cable and go to streaming like most of us do now. So it's gonna be a big thing for our community to help many people that need that help, and it's gonna save them money. And with all the other smart city technologies, I know we talked about, if someone shoot a gun in the air, you'll know that person, that, well, a gun was shot in three, four minutes. So it's just different thing for safety, the whole nine yards. I think this is a win-win, and I'm praying that you all approve this as well. Any other?
Todd, with this system, you know, at one time, we were talking about doing these GPS readings of...
AMI?
Meters, yeah.
Yeah, that, that has, we just had a kickoff meeting of that.
Yeah.
This system, right now, the way that system, the data collectors on that system backhaul through our, what we had, the utility has a 3.65 gigahertz, I just got real technical, I shouldn't have, sorry about that. It has a wireless network system across the city, okay, that is at a high frequency that we use. We will also be using the fiber to tie, we'll be using, the collectors will tie in this fiber and make it more efficient, okay? So, you know, if that system goes down, we'll have both of these as backup redundancy. I mean, you know, as we all know, I mean, that's one of the major things across everything, and we've realized is, we need, our infrastructure, we need to have redundancy for all things, including in our city. When I'm talking to my water systems and my sewer systems and my electric systems, having that redundancy to make sure that we have, you know, those services available for our citizens, you know, I heard somebody say this at a conference I was at, and I think it's so true, and I never, first time he said it, I never thought it, electricity is not necessarily a luxury anymore, it's a necessity. If you don't have it, look at what happens when you don't have it. You know, y'all saw Memphis what happens when you don't have it. So that's kind of the mindset we're taking. These services that we provide, they're not a luxury, it's a necessity, so.
Is this system gonna create any additional infrastructure in the city, like towers and things of that nature, or is it?
No.
Okay.
No towers.
One thing I'm also excited about, thinking about something Councilman Wheeler said, and I think Kendall will agree with me, you all, we pay all these large phone bills for the city. Once we get this thing built out and runs the way it is, we can add our own phone system on to our own internet service that would save, wow, so much money.
We're currently paying quite a bit to others to have our city networked. And in the future, if we have our own network, we're just, hey, you want to tie that on? Sure. It's just a matter of the equipment to tie it on.
This may be a question that's out in left field, but before the 2020 elections, I guess you'd say, the state was putting broadband in, I know the rural areas, they were trying to get broadband in rural areas.
Right.
And there's no grants that would help us?
I can tell you, this is, we talked about this, our main thing is if y'all approve this, our next step is, yes, we're gonna sign a contract and start the initial, we will be looking for grants. There are a ton of grants out there that the federal government has put out there through the infrastructure bill, not only for broadband, but also, you know, public safety, okay? You know, the Sky cops tying those back in for water and sewer systems, for hardening of my electric system. If I'm able to communicate on my electric system where certain things, where if I have a breaker open, it actually opens another breaker and closes another breaker to get more people right back on, you know, that's what we're looking for, is those type of things, so.
You're asking for two, is it two million?
Two million.
Two million. So I know the mayor's, I like what you're saying, well, I really do, but when you start getting his grants in, will the city be able to bring some of those funds to the administration? You may not need it to be.
Well, if the, well, no, the whole, okay, the whole build out of this project was originally with, using contractors was 27 million.
Oh, okay.
This is just step one. Doing this is not cheap, okay? Doing it with internal people and starting was 12 million. So it's, this is not, you know, this is just step one.
Yeah.
Okay, this is not...
Not to grease your pockets.
Yeah, this is step one, and grants will be used specifically what they are written for, and that's build out of infrastructure to serve the citizens of West Memphis.
Okay, I just, I was just trying to get that all clear.
Councilman Kent?
Just a quick point, from a personnel standpoint, you can envision three to six employees over time.
About six employees is what we're looking, might have to add. But the reason that I might, remember, I'm going with AMI, that's gonna have to, I'm gonna have to have to, that's gonna cause some staff reductions in that area. My hope is potentially that the people in that area could maybe cross over and start to learn some of these other skills.
Okay.
Our customer service is going to change, will have to change some also.
Dr. Bruce?
I want a question. In the long, well, it's not a question, but in the long run, I'm assuming that this will pay for itself in the long run, when you, when you start adding all the different pieces to it, that it actually pays for itself, am I correct?
Yes, it will be a net positive revenue service.
Councilman Kent?
With some of the, if y'all were at the meetings, y'all saw what we will be able to potentially provide some services to low-income customers for. I mean, I think we're going to be able to make it very economical, so everybody will be able to afford it.
Even if it was a neutral situation, the benefits that everybody's receiving far outweighs, you know, their current environment, that's for sure. Well, quick, the parks, open or secure networks there?
Well, it'll be open for the citizens. I mean, it'll be secure backs where, you know, they'll be able to get on the internet and do things. I mean, I don't think we're gonna limit their, what they can access on there. Okay, I don't need to say anymore, because that starts to get out of my realm of what you can do across that network.
Okay, all right.
My knowledge gets, starts to get small of what I'm able to limit. Can you limit it websites through that network? You might be able, I think you can, so...
If I go to a website, who else can access my device while I'm sitting there? That was my question.
Yeah, I can't answer that.
Okay.
It's above my, I'm gonna have to hire somebody and...
Okay.
Were there any other questions for Ward or Todd? Here and now. Ms. Crone?
No.
Here and now, Ms. City Clerk, will you call the role individually?
Okay. Councilmember Bruce?
Yes.
Councilmember Kent?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Hope?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Councilmember Muhammad?
Yes.
Councilmember Monday?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Yes.
Ten out of ten.
Ten out of ten, guys, I thank you, I feel like a kid in the candy store right now. Thank you all, thank you. And finally, I want to discuss the A-Win radio project. This project is critical for public safety, now for the benefit of those of you who were not able to come to the session yesterday. There are places in the city that if our police and first responders are there, their radios don't work. Completed radio silence. Why is this important if a police officer is one of those responding to a call from one of our citizens and need to radio for backup? Their ability to use their radio becomes a life or death situation. A yes vote on this project has the potential to save lives. This upgrades to our communication system virtually eliminates this radio silence by placing in the hand of our first responders, responders, the latest state-of-the-art communication technology that only provides optimum coverage for the men and women who protect us. It's also them to communicate with the county, state, police, and other agencies during critical emergencies. So, Mr. Joe Gordon, would you come forward and, Council, I'm sure they got a few questions or three things and...
And how much is this portion?
All of it, it's six million, this is two, hold on, the portion that they, that we have, that we asked you to give is two million, but the total is five point, six million.
Six million.
Okay, okay. But we just give, we just give the two million of this ARPA money.
So that just extinguishes that ARPA money?
No, no, listen, two million to economic development, two million to broadband, and two million to this project. Now, it's gonna be a four million dollar left over, which we're gonna hope to get grants and other funds and other ways U.S. Budget Chairman can come up and weigh, and we can work together to see how we're gonna get that money.
I'm gonna go ahead and explain the system.
Pardon, sir?
Please, I mean, you just explain the system and we'll ask some questions.
Yeah, so let me just kind of start at the beginning. So last summer, we had a team of engineers, well, first we met with Chief Rose, he outlined all the problems in the city, okay? Dead spots, which the mayor mentioned, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that. Everybody uses different technology, different frequency bands, it's kind of like a tower babble, so to speak, right? So when you have an emergency situation, he, Chief Rose is the Director of Emergency Management, okay, is trying to coordinate the response to those kind of events. Day to day, you've been lumping along with what you got. My understanding is the West Memphis Police Department system is at end of life, our critical components are at end of life. What that means is, if you have a failure, right, there's no parts available. You can go check on eBay if you can find a part, right, for like dispatch consoles. Probably not the most optimum way to run a public safety system. So we did an engineering analysis, which, I don't know if y'all can see the map up there, this is the coverage, portable-based coverage of the geographical boundaries of the city, right? I was talking to Councilman Kat here about the coverage. So there's a site over at the jail, and there's a new proposed site, you can see, the Entergy site, right, where you, they're actually proposing to use the Entergy tower for the second site. When you think about a portable radio, an officer wears it on their hip, so you get body loss, right? Your body absorbs some of that radio energy. So we're gonna give them good portable coverage, which is what public safety-grade communication systems require, we put the two sites in. So, so there's a long, detailed proposal, I think it's 160 pages, so it's well thought out, well-vetted. Motorola has put in 140 A-Win sites across the state. We're in the middle of putting in a big upgrade for A-Win on all the microwave stuff, so there's a lot of moving parts. As far as the finances of the project, I think, and I don't want to speak out of turn here for Tori, for you, but, so you're able to use part of the ARP money for the public safety side, and then we have a municipal lease purchase agreement that covers the rest of it. So, I mean, from a financial point of view, I think, you know, the city has the money identified. Now, the grant piece, Councilman Kat and I were talking right before the meeting, the schedule of this, when you, when you say yes tonight and we sign everything up, it's probably gonna be a month or two before the project actually starts. Then there's a contract design review where we go through every element of the project, I mean, every connector, tower site, coverage, features, functions, you know, we will have the law enforcement folks, the police fire, utility guys, Chief Rose involved in that process. Once we've got it all, you sign off on that, then the permitting, the National Environmental Protection, the state historical site, surveys, and avian migration, I mean, you've got towers, right, so all that starts. And then probably by, if we're, if everything works perfect, which I'll be honest with you, it doesn't always work perfect, but we've done it enough that we're pretty good at it, probably around July of, maybe June, May to July of next year, the infrastructure will be built. And then to your, our earlier discussion about when are we shipping the radios, it's gonna be right around that timeframe, okay? So it's about a 14 or so-month project, and I think based on the rest of your neighbors around here, they're all on A-Win today. And Chief Rose is, I don't mean to speak for him, but he's not here, so I'm gonna do it anyway, okay? Y'all are on island right now, so if there is a major event in the city, okay, F3 tornado, whatever, rolls through here, and you need to interoperate with the county or Marion or even Memphis, right, because you're gonna have first responders from surrounding, they're all on A-Win today, right, so they show up, you're gonna be trying to talk on a cell phone to talk to your dispatch, to talk to their dispatch, relaying messages, right? So, they show up, you're gonna be trying to talk on a cellphone to talk to your dispatch, to talk to their dispatch, relaying messages, right? And I mean, in those moments, we call moments that matter most because they do, right? So, the tornado that hit Monette, uh, in November, up around Craighead County, that was a, you know, big search and rescue effort, right? And then, it went over in Kentucky and did a ton of damage. So, when you're doing those kinda things, you need to have interoperable communication, it needs to be reliable, resilient, redundant, so that it matters, it works, and moments that matter most, if that makes sense. So, I, I don't know if I, is that kinda what you wanted, I mean, as far as overviewing the system? I just wanted to make sure, cover everything y'all need to know.
My only question for Mayor, if I may, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, you were talking, he'll recognize my hand after you're done, I'm sure.
We all know this is not immediate response, as you indicated, it's gonna be twelve, fourteen months out, so officers are still gonna be in the same situations they've been on along. Uh, we're still gonna handle the situations the way we always have been for the last several years. To me, it's a shame that it's brought to us at the twelfth witching hour, uh, when this should've been brought to us two, three years ago. And I think it would've made this discussion and financing, everything, a little easier to handle. My concerns are, are very, very simple. We're booking money that we do not have. We're booking money for a repayment off a prediction or a projection from a provider, uh, I need to voice you here in town. When you're talking about, you know, another sixty-six, sixty-seven thousand dollars per month, over twelve months, over sixty months, you know, I'm the world's worst, I'm gonna take one in the hand versus two in the bush. There's no assurances that those revenues will come in. Though, my question is, will be to the Treasurer and the Finance Director and to the Mayor, if those revenues do not come in as expected, what are your options you're gonna be bringing back forth to council to deal with the shortfall that we may experience, or we may not? That is my number one concern, how do we alter this five-year lease agreement? Get out from underneath that financial strain and put it on a eight-year or ten-year based off the data once it actually starts rolling in? Or are we just gonna go ahead and make massive cuts in the 1.3 capital outlay plan to fund the project? Again, I don't wanna see us get into a binding situation. The last thing I wanna do is tie the hands of administration on funding, I don't want department heads to have to come in and say, I gotta cut another six hundred thousand out of this budget? You know, in order to balance the books. I just wanna make sure we're walking down the path that we are very comfortable with, that, that's all I'm asking.
If I may.
And talking to Mr. Gordon, he is going to bend over backwards to help us get some grants. Uh, and, you know, for obvious reasons, it's for both of our best interests.
Win-win.
Um, you know, hopefully, those will come in and materialize within six, maybe seven months. I know Mr. Rose will be immediately writing some, hopefully, when he gets back in town, and all this may be for naught, you're right.
Let me ask this, Counselor. Uh, Director Rose started in the first council meeting, every month, would start giving us an update on grants he's running for this project and where he's at. So, definitely on that, I'm gonna make sure I light a fire on him to make sure that we get that funds coming in.
You know, there's no if, ands, or buts, the system needs to be in play, first agree with that. All I wanna know is, if we do have to get into a situation, we need to have some options on the table to deal with the, the debt structure. So, that's all I'm, we'll visit what they've been about and everything else as we move forward based off of the next six, seven months, what materialized, what didn't.
Yeah, I, I will point out that, um, in the lease agreement, item number five is a non-appropriations agreement, okay? So, you, you, I mean, Motorola never writes contracts where we box our customers in a corner, okay? So, I'm operating from memory here, but if you get to that situation, you can just notify us, hey, we can't, you know, this is too much, and the first thing we're gonna do is come in and try to figure out a solution, maybe we have to roll it over, whatever we have to do, right? But, the city always has options. The point I was making yesterday, that when we started the, this process as far as building up the pricing and doing the, putting the project together, probably started in late, mid-October, September, as I've heard several comments on your economic development and maybe some on the broadband, prices have gone up, so we've held the pricing over, right? Eleven days after delivered the proposal, this radio pricing went up ten percent, well, there's two million dollars roughly, give or take. So, my point to the council is, you're really doing two things here, you're fixing your public safety prob, problem, and you're locking in twenty-twenty-one pricing, and you're hed, okay, three things, and you're hedged against future inflation, right?
Keeping our farmers safe.
And you're keeping your first responders safe.
That's right.
So, tho, those three things right there, I encourage you to take advantage of, right, while you have the opportunity.
Ms. Muhammad?
Yes, sir, thank you so very much. Mayor McClendon, I really do love the idea of this A-Win, I think it's most certainly a win-win. I love the fact that we can interact quickly with the surrounding areas if something happens, and there will not be a lot of blank space in case of a critical, say, for example, if there's an escapee, a, a very bad criminal or something on the loose, we can just go ahead and, and interact with all these other departments. I am all for this, and I know, uh, Mr. Rose is, is, is doing every, Rose is doing everything he possibly can to, to make it work. And we as city council members, Budget Committee, everybody, we most certainly are going to try to make it work. And I'm one thousand percent in favor of this A-Win program.
Thank you so much, Counselor.
And my thing is, I would hate for, uh, a catastrophe to happen over at the dog track, and, uh, they can't get no one to come help them. They're on the twentieth, twenty-first floor, and need some assistance.
Yes.
Then they gotta go through this dispatch, that dispatch, to get hold to some help, that's my problem.
Absolutely. Well, and listen, I mean, we all have families, some of them are first responders, you think about those people that are going, running into the burning buildings, pulling somebody over at three o'clock in the morning, the only lifeline they have is that radio, right? So, you wanna make sure that you get them the best technology the city of West Memphis can afford. And, you know, as far as the technology, it is widely used, low risk. Memphis, we're doing, we're doing, in the process of finishing up the Memphis Shelby County project, we did Crenshaw County a few years ago, Marion right after that, so this puts y'all right where you need to be from a coverage and interoperability perspective.
Yeah, we about three years behind.
Ms. Tori?
Um, just to respond to Tracy's point, uh, in my opinion, all the revenue from Southland is pre-booked, uh, without actually knowing if we're gonna receive it or not, you have four point eight in the general. And then, because you all were receiving additional funds from Southland, you decided to dedicate to capital purchases and debt repayment. Even with COVID going on, and we didn't receive funds for one month, we still were able to meet our budget amount plus. And that was in twenty-twenty, in twenty-twenty-one, we, we exceeded both the 1.3 for capital and repayment, um, by three hundred and fifty thousand, so. Um, yes, I totally understand what Tracy's saying, but I think, uh, we will be able to meet that. Worst-case scenario, we will have to reduce capital, capital outlay. But, one thing I do wanna inform you all, capital outlay as it stands has to stay at that number. So, there is a cap in order for us to be able to meet this lease agreement now. So, right now, we budgeted nine hundred and twenty thousand for capital purchases in the general fund, it has to stay that way for the next five years. That's the only thing I wanted, wanted you all to realize, capital purchase cannot go over that, or this lease payment will be cutting it close. Initially, I, I brought over additional monies to be a savings, so that we could actually pay off debt early, but for the next five years, that will have to be dedicated to this lease payment.
Well, let me, let me add this too, before I go to you, Counselor. I know Counselor McHatt, you said, uh, Treasurer, Finance Director, and Administration, but I just want you all to know that the council, we all in this together. So, what you all decide to do, you know, know that we gotta make decision of all of us together to make sure we make this go. But, I'm definitely gonna do my part to make sure what I have, uh, power over to handle, but definitely gonna still need you all guidance and support, and whatever we need to do to make this happen.
We've already booked six hundred thousand dollars next year, you know, that, that money's booked and spent, so now we're down to three hundred thousand dollars for capital outlay for all of twenty-twenty-three. You know, department heads will have to understand, if the revenue does not come in as we are projecting, the budgets are gonna be extremely tight, uh, and it's just gonna be a little bit more difficult, maybe than it has been in years past. Uh, this year's budget was two point three million deficit, you know, those funds were cut out from the department heads in order to balance the books. We have to maintain a balanced budget, and what I'm saying is, if the revenues come up short, I'm expe, I'm hoping, admin and elected officials will look at every option that's available to you to relieve some of that stress, maybe look at a different financing office, offer, offer. Uh, it may be something we need to place some collateral and stretch it for ten years, and then if that revenue rebounds, we'll just prepay it. Just, um, don't be surprised if this has to come back to you, and reconsider based off of future revenue sources that may or may not materialize.
See Treasurer?
I think everyone in this room is worried about the safety and worried about our city. I don't think anyone's against the project for that, this has just put us at max. Now, my father was a trooper, and now my twenty-four-year-old son's a trooper, this is, you know, we need it, but just remember, this has pretty well put us at max at what we're doing. But, revenues, perhaps they will, but we're living in troubled times with the inflation rate, with trouble in Europe right now. So, just remember, this right here is pretty well at the edge of what we need to take on right now.
But, it is so, it is gonna be so important, and I know this administrative side that, uh, Director Rose get these grants. I know he has a grant that's possibly out there that could pay for the whole thing, so it's gonna be very important that we get that. If he get that, then we won't even have an issue, but right now, we need to make sure this happens.
Uh, and in the long run, um, we actually have radios and all of that in our capital outlay program. Um, it will save us money in the long run. All of the software update maintenance falls on A-Win, we would only be responsible for the radios as they come up damaged. And so, um, it, there is a potential savings after the five years, there's a three-year warranty, so in between year four and five, we'll have to, you know, work that out for a maintenance plan of some sort, but it's still gonna be cheaper than what we, what we're doing now.
We got Director Rose, Director Rose, he look frozen.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, just make a comment, because what Ms. Perry just said is very true. We've been involved in a lot of studies on what is the real cost of ownership of owning a radio system. Right now, the city of West Memphis owns three different networks. You're, you're a network, public safety network operator, that's not really the function of a city with a system like A-Win here. Let them take that burden of maintaining it, upgrading it, replacing it. I was asked yesterday, how long will these radios last? They have a minimum lifecycle of fifteen years, right? So, so, I mean, I think if you really dug deep, which nobody, very seldom have time to do, there's a lot of extra costs that go into people that are dealing with radio issues, broken radios when they're out of service, so there's some hidden cost of ownership that nobody really ever sees here, right? And, I mean, we, we have, uh, done a lot of different studies for different size cities, counties, and states even, so it's, it's pretty dramatic.
You're talking about, what, four hundred and thirty radios?
Yes.
About twenty-six, twenty-seven hundred dollars.
Yeah, after you, net of the incentives and discounts that are in our proposal.
Mayor, of course, you're talking about a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars a year, you would need to set that aside every year for your depreciation account. Now, we gotta back out, getting rid of these other three systems, so it may only boil down to eighty-five thousand dollars a year. But, we need to start setting aside those funds, cause we know we're gonna have to replace the radios, there's no ifs, ands, or buts about that. Again, just wanna make sure that we're projecting all those costs in everything we're doing. The four hundred and sixty radios is putting radio on every single hand of every single employee that we have, plus having backups, correct?
I think it was four hundred and thirty is in the proposal, or four thirty, so. Chief Rose did the subscriber count for us, uh, yes, I believe that it covers the, all three, the, the Police Department, uh, mobile and portable, Fire Department, mobile and portable, and the Utilities Group, mobile and portable.
Now, my understanding was this is a citywide project, sanitation, street department, everybody would have a radio with them for communication purposes.
Yeah, I mean, you'd need to ask Chief Rose, cause he actually did the count on that, and, but, uh, four hundred and thirty radios is a pretty good-sized fleet, I think that may cover y'all, but I can't really address that.
Three hundred and ninety-seven employees, if I remember right, somewhere in there, so.
It, it is a citywide.
Okay, alright, so we'll make sure we're on the same page. Mobile, I'm assuming is just gonna be very similar to the twelve, as the body cams.
Say it again, sir?
The mobile.
Mobile radio?
Be at, here, twelve, or are we at twenty-four, do you know the number?
At twenty-four.
That'll be in the cars at all times, yeah.
Yeah, uh, it's a hundred and eighty-seven, uh, mobiles and two hundred and forty-three portals.
Okay. Okay.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw my two cents in, I've been sitting here listening to all the conversation, and I will have to, um, Counselor Cat does make some good points that need to be brought up, and, and we need to look at, talk about. Our CFO, Ms. Tori Perry, brings up good points. This conversation is similar to a conversation we had about two years ago over a nine-million-dollar bond issue of concerning one source of revenue in, in our city, and, uh, from what I've seen, being on the, uh, Budget Committee, what I've seen is, uh, I've seen our numbers go up considerably from, from before. And, uh, I know that, that there's always gonna be that issue in there, there's always that issue about the what-ifs, it's always gonna happen. But, in my opinion, from what I also learned through the Police Commission meetings that I've been sitting in, is this is a project that probably is ten years overdue.
I, I would agree with that, sir.
Uh, overdue, and, uh, it needs to be rectified, it need to be corrected. And to do that, it's gonna take a, it's gonna bite the bullet. And then do as, uh, uh, Counselor Cat and CFO, Ms. Perry said, down the road, we'll look at it, you know, find another way to do something. As long as it's not raising taxes, I'm all for it.
Yes, sir.
Of course, uh, all I can go by is the data we have in front of us. We're roughly five hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars ahead of our budget projections. Then you're spending seven hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, so, you know, is there a strong possibility, yes, the revenue source is there? Yes, it is, but I feel like I would be neglectful if I didn't turn around and say, we have got to be extremely careful at this point.
No, I appreciate your input.
You know, I just, because, like, again, you get into a major turned-down recession, we're gonna have to, to really alter our plans and how we're doing things, so.
We're just seeing the early effects of the war, and then, and then it's hit everybody, look at what you spend, it's still.
Well, and I would add, when times get bad, that's when you probably need this system the most, right? Cause crime goes up, people act out, I mean, it's, it, so, it's an, I understand the dilemma you're in, but as, uh, Counselor McCrum, you mentioned, it's definitely ten years overdue, A-Win's been in operation for twenty years, right? And it's just grown and grown and grown. And you have, uh, I noticed, thank you for approving the body warrant camera, my associate, Matthew Warren, will be very happy about that, okay? But, I think the, the point is, we are a partner, Motorola is a partner to the city, we're not gonna, we're not gonna, uh, we will work with you in any way we can if, if, if you have problems, okay? Cause if you're having problems, we're probably all having problems at that point, so, um, but I understand your concerns, but I think this is something that you just, as you said, you gotta bite the bullet and move forward with it.
I guess my standpoint, it's not a question of doing this, that's not the issue. It's a matter of preparing yourself if the revenue numbers don't come in as they were projected. Nobody's doubting this needs to be done, it's overdue, and hopefully, we'll make sure it never gets to the witching hour again.
Yes, sir.
And that, on the tenth year, it'll be in the capital outlay plan, okay, we're moving on this now, and getting ready to make sure we don't get to the last-minute decisions.
Gotcha, well, I'll do my part and spend a lot of money over at Southland and the restaurants surrounding it.
We got them on record and stuff.
Well, I was thinking, looking at that go up right over the last six months, that those folks in Tunica are probably nervous, I'm surprised they didn't try to lobby to, to that, cause y'all are gonna be inundated with folks coming out of Memphis.
So much more. Always the bad guy, don't book something to have it.
Well, what I'm actually seeing is everybody likes what your product, but I think we need to go back to the Finance Committee and, and try to work, work this thing out before we go forward with it.
You talked about the Budget Committee.
You talked about the Budget Committee?
Now, I mean, basically what you're looking at is the $2 million commitment upfront eats the majority of the $3.5 million infrastructure plan that you're having. That 1.5 million is not gonna get spent next month. There's gonna be several windows of applying for permits, going through and doing the testing. So it's not like you're spending $4 million next week. A good 2, 2.3 million, that may not be until 12 months from today, depending on when the delivery of the radios are. The 1.5 million, again, because I know what these numbers are, that doesn't bother me. It's that other 2.5 that I get a little nervous about sometimes. So, but I truly believe in six, seven months, we're gonna have a pretty secure handle on the number of grants that implied for, what's gonna get approved, what's still out there that we're in the running for. Again, I just simply do not want a last-minute surprise to any member of this council or administration or anyone else that we didn't think this through far enough. Again, I think the project is a win situation without a doubt. I just always get a little nervous. I apologize for that.
I've known you for a long time and your brother too, so I know that, that you guys do put a lot of thought into, into reasonable thought into figuring this stuff out. And you guys have, everything you bring up is appreciative, believe me, it's all appreciative because you do bring that side up that you may not hear, you know? And, but I think with that in mind, I think we all go ahead and do a vote?
Well, I'm just gonna say two things. I know you said you was gonna eat this afternoon and all of that, but, but please make sure that Dwayne got more application on this destiny with how.
I sent him a bunch of stuff to that. Tori, you got a copy of it, right?
And, and like I said, I won't do this again just quickly. This is the vote of the council, each one of you all. So, but City Clerk, as you will call the role individually.
Councilmember Bruce?
Yes.
Councilmember Cat?
Yes.
Councilmember Crum?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Hope?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mohammed?
Yes.
Councilmember Monday?
Yes.
Councilmember Mary?
Yes.
Councilmember Wheelers? Councilmember Wheelers?
Huh? We got nine yeses and one no. That measure passes. Definitely, I wanna thank you all for your all's support. Also, do I need to get that contract? I need to get a motion to second to approve the contract before AWIN?
So moved. Yeah, at least agreement.
Yes. And discussion? Just the lease agreement on the, on the AWIN system?
Actually, it's a master agreement that has to do with service and the equipment. Equipment lease is actually a exhibit to the master.
No prepayment in agreement.
Actually, and that's something I need to say to you, Joe, is that, I'm sorry, Mr. Gordon, is that I did add in there, I know it's already, it was probably in there already, but I did add just a little sentence about, no, we would be allowed to prepay it without penalty in the schedule of payment. And I added just some language we had discussed before in one other paragraph.
In the master contract?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah.
Councilman Wheelers? Okay, he's changed his vote to yes, so it, it passes 10. Mr. Joe, let me tell you something. When you have five things on the agenda and they five of five, I need you here every Thursday.
You need to go to the casino tonight, that's what you need.
Oh, yeah.
You're on a roll.
So, all the papers are by eye to approve the contract. Opposed? Now, we gonna go get the lottery number. Thank you.
Thank y'all. We appreciate it. Pass Motorola, thank you very much.
Also, I have an agreement for MPO, for to pay the pickering firm. The, it was already approved, City Attorney just had to link the contract and get everything taken care of. City Attorney, you wanna speak on that?
A while back and, and they made the changes that I had requested, so it's fine.
Can I get a motion in second to approve the contract?
Take it.
All in favor by eye?
All right.
Opposed? Also, that, that passes well. Charity money, I want to send 750 to the L.R. Jackson Girls Club and 500 to the J.W. Rich Girls Club. Councilman Monday?
I want to bring 750 with the L.R. Jackson Girls Club also.
Were there anyone else that want to distribute some of their charity days? Yes. Councilman Crum, Councilwoman Mohammed, Councilman Cat? Okay. Can I get a motion in second to approve?
So moved.
All in favor by eye?
All right.
Opposed? All right. A point, let's go to committee reports. Fire Commission?
Yes, sir. The Fire Commission met Tuesday, March 15th. Here are a few highlights from that particular meeting. There are two vacancies on the fire side. Promotions, Robert Maybe was promoted to Chief of Training. There were no resignations or no new hires. Vehicle maintenance, the fire department is in need of a vehicle to transport first responders to rookie school. The vehicle that was being used wrote down why the respondents were traveling to rookie school and the vehicle is no longer operable. Apparently, the firefighters are using their own vehicles to travel and the city is buying their gas. Chief Clay is looking into several options in obtaining a vehicle dedicated just for the first responders to travel to and from rookie school. Also discussed was the possibility of getting a new fire truck. I didn't get all of that in my head and if Chief Clay or Chief Ely will just come and explain about the fire truck and when we, the timeline as far as getting the discount. And then I'll continue on with my report. Just wanna make sure it's explained thoroughly.
Yes, Ma'am Mohammed. We're in need of a fire truck. Our oldest fire apparatus is 18 years old. NFPA standard states that we can't have a frontline pumper operable beyond 15 years. Engine three, we, we're having a lot of maintenance being done on it. As we stand right now, it's in the shop and we looking at, it's been $10,000 to $12,000 on it. Our next oldest truck is 13 years, 13 years old. So we also having problems with that. So that's why we're in need of a fire truck.
What about the deadline, the May 1st deadline? Explain that.
Piers, that's who we get our bumpers from. And starting May the 1st, they're gonna have a 15 to 20% increase on apparatus. So if we can get approval to purchase a fire truck, we can eliminate having to pay that fee, that added interest of 15 to 20%. So that's why it's so important to try to get that fire truck approved.
Chief Dean?
The engine that we purchased last year, it was $603,000. So it's gonna be the same, exact same pumper as we did, that we got last year. So I'm looking at, it'll be a little over $603,000. I don't have the exact amount, he's working on the quote and I will have it for you next Council meeting.
You made a, you made a statement about you can't have a pumper that's over 15 years old?
A frontline pumper.
A frontline pumper.
A frontline pumper. We have reserve, after 15 years, 15 years, they go into a reserve status. But our first, our mainland screen pumpers, they got to be less than 15 years. That's NFPA standards.
I know that there's just small communities around Critney County, some of them's got pumpers that look like they were built in 1949.
That's correct, yes.
And they're still operable. I mean, they still use them as the primary pumper. I, I guess I'm looking for.
There, there's not the standard for NFPA though. And that, and that helps our ISO rating remains a one. And the money, the cost that we spending to keep those apparatus, you know, running is costing, so we just putting money, throwing away money.
What, what's your expectation on coming before council and asking for this?
Well, I was, we can all the paperwork together as I speak now and next council meeting, I will have all documentation for its price. Now, this pumper that we get, it's, it's gonna take, where it would take a year to build a pumper, now it's 22 months to two years to build that pumper. So if we can get it approved prior to May 1st, we'll have two years from then to actually make payment.
What would be the payment plan on it? I mean, not payment plan, but what would be the financial commitment on it? Do you have to pay so much down on the front end?
No, all, they would need this appeal.
Okay.
And we would pay once we receive the pumper, which would be in 2024.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. You explained it so beautifully. Also, the fire department is in need of a new ambulance as one was involved in an accident and is possibly totaled. So we are needing a fire truck, we're needing an ambulance, we're needing a car to transport our first responders. And we are going to certainly try to make sure all of those needs are fulfilled. Building maintenance, Station One is in need of repairs. The roof is leaking very badly and has been for such a long time, but I think they're waiting to see about renovations to that whole station before going into doing something about that leaf, which it is a flat roof, is that what you said? Right, and those are really the worst, the worst kind. Training, the five firefighters that were in EMT school successfully completed the course and they all passed. There are currently three firefighters attending the fire academy. The Easton Lane Training burn building is projected to start this month and, is it Captain Babe, Lieutenant Babe?
Chief Babe.
Chief Babe. Too many chiefs around here, I'm an Indian.
I'm still in the transition period myself.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. He's gonna be over that academy and is most certainly an honor to have that training academy named after these courageous firefighters who lost their lives in the line of duty. And we are most certainly proud of that. Let's see here. EMS, EMS calls year-to-date, 286. EMS, I'm sorry, not EM, EMS collections year-to-date, $50,573.70. Budget, the fire department is waiting for their trial balance for this year. Ms. Tori is working on that, I'm sure tirelessly. Updates, the West Memphis Fire Department promotional ceremony is Friday, March 18th at 2:00 PM at the Eugene Boulevard Civic Center and everybody is cordially invited to come to that. Fire training at Southland Casino has already begun. The new Station Five is set to open in mid-April of this year. I drove by there yesterday, it's very, very beautiful. I love that big red, that big, big, beautiful red five on there, it really stands out. And that is my report, unless you all have something else to say.
Thank you. Well, Councilwoman Mohammed, would you proceed with Parks?
Yes. The Parks Commission did not meet because we did not have a quorum, but Director Parker passed out quotes for the High Tower in Hilton Rogers Parks renovation. And of course, you all have a copy of that, of those quotes in your, in your package. Thank you, Ms. Patricia, for being so kind to me, for not brought them in too late. And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Murray, Police?
Police and Utility.
Police and Utility.
First with the Utility. On March 10th, 2022, the West Memphis Utility Commission met in regular session on this dated 8:30. The first item on the agenda was approval of February minutes. The minutes were approved as ready. The second item on the agenda was February safety report. The Safety Director Brett Sands reported that there were 126 days since last recordable incident, 869 days since last lost time injury, and no recordable injuries for 2022. The third item on the agenda was personnel update. There were four new hires for the month of February. The Utility currently has seven open positions out of 79 budgeted positions. The next item on the agenda was the approval of system engineer job description. This was presented by General Manager Todd Peterson, motion passed unanimously. The last item on the agenda was special call meeting for March 22nd. This was presented by General Manager Todd Peterson, motion passed unanimously. End of report. March Police Commission met on March 14th, 2022. The meeting was called to order at 12:02 PM. And most of this, that we've already heard, was since we have our new chief, our new incoming chief, I wanted to present his proposals, or his observations as presented to the commission. The meeting was turned over to Chief Campbell and he reports as follows. Presented a proposal for raises for patrolmen and retainment and recruitment, recruitment as we are losing officers to surrounding areas. We lost five officers in February. The proposal to increase wages, a benefit incentive package that is compatible with the area. His proposal included a new facility, upgraded equipment, grant writer, legal advisor, and crime software upgrade. Chief Campbell estimated that these improvements, these improvements will present an increased budget, a large increased budget. And Tracy Cam, Tracy Cat, Councilman Cat suggested that we all sit, all people concerned, sit in one room and we need to start working on this now. And instead of putting out fires all over the city, all department heads should be present, we start working on a master plan, a long-term, long-term plan to bring our city to the call. End of report.
Thank you, Councilman Murray.
Excuse me, Mayor. Councilman Murray?
Yes, sir.
Chief Campbell, when he gave, did he give you a, any passouts or information about his suggestions on what we need to do with the police force?
Okay, now, first of all, the wage increases, he think that they would help. And a benefit package including educational reimbursements, overtime pay.
Did, do you have this? Do you have this?
I have it on, I have it on a recording, yes.
Well, actually, the answer is quite real quick to move forward is that, you know, all of the cities around West Memphis, you can't never compete with Memphis, so don't throw Memphis in there, but every other city around the, Alablanca, Cogby, Germantown, South Haven, they at least, at least is at least like $6 to $7 more than what we pay in the city. And, you know, we have been lucky, when we look at the news every day in Memphis, someone is dying, but, you know, we've been blessed and our police department is doing what they're doing. But, you know, we're saying that as well, still, you got to have them on the payment there as well. So we're just looking at for the, the police department and the fire department, whatever, and we'll go from there later.
Well, the reason I was asking is because of the Budget Committee. I would like to have that information before that we meet next Thursday.
Okay, Councilman Cat suggested that we, we need to have that meeting where we can bring everybody together and we can work on this. Because, you know, every, if you listen to the Commission report, everybody that comes in, they are needing. So instead of addressing them singularly, let's come together and collectively come up with a plan, a master plan for the whole city.
And to answer your question, yes, I did get a copy of the written proposal and I will scan it so she can send it to everyone. Okay, that's. I just finished reading it last night. Just wanted the information.
Thank you.
That's okay.
Yes.
Charge it to the mayor.
Any, is that, that completion report?
That's completion report.
No other committees had met, so, I don't know. Uh, the City Clerk?
Well, of course, this was passed out to everyone, it should have been in your package. So if you had the question, you could have called, I guess, the Budget Chair, myself, Ms. Tori, you know about it, you know, because it was sent to everyone, so.
I'm in hopes of completing the December data. Finance Director has given me that. I'll forward it to the Ford View, first Ford View, and then once you've approved it, we'll send it out to everyone.
Okay. And one other thing I wanna say, of course, you know, Ford increases and things of that nature, but one thing that this council body and this administration really need to think about was before, some years back when they had the first war, when it first got started, we was short 11 men between the fire and the police department. Now, of course, those people was in the reserves and I know, I don't know if anyone paying close attention to Iraq and Ukraine, but I can assure you, they are already getting ready to start, you know, deploying people. So we need to look down the road, make sure we don't run into that again because we had 11 people that was gone at one time. And so this possibly can happen again. So that's something I think we really need to look close to because, think about it, even if you pay 11 men, even if they got paid, they had a salary of $37,000, think about it, that's almost a half a million dollars. So I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there, so that's something I know we need to really start looking at.
Thank you, City Clerk. City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Yes, Mayor, thank you. I had one more item of business that I'd like for the council to consider and that is with regard to a lawsuit that we have ongoing now. We, the lawyer for the municipal league who is representing us on the lawsuit, received a settlement demand of $10,000. This is a current employee, so I really don't want to bring up names unless you want to go to, into executive session to discuss it. But the attorney for the municipal league and I both agree that we should reject, or we recommend that we should reject the settlement demand and not make any counter offer at all. That's what I'm asking the council to do. I can try to answer questions if you have them without talking in specifics if necessary.
You did a motion?
Yes.
Motion to accept our city attorney's opinion over this lawsuit that we reject this offer?
Can I get a second? Mr. City Clerk, will you call the role, please?
Councilmember Bruce?
Yes.
Councilmember Cat?
Yes.
Councilmember Crum?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Hope?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson? Councilmember Hudson? Councilmember Mohammed?
Yes.
Councilmember Monday?
Yes.
Councilmember Mary?
Yes.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Yes.
Eight out of 10, it passes. Thank you, City Attorney. Next thing is the appointments with the Westwood Utility. We had the resume of Emily Scarborough last week, where Emily Scarborough will be doing, finishing the term of the.
Susan Marshall.
Susan Marshall, exactly. So she'll be finishing that term, so we got to find out how long that term may be, but whenever that term, so she'll be rerun or need to be reappointed to that position again. But right now, this is only to finish Ms. Susan Marshall's spot. So we had the resume last week, it's just time to vote. Can I get a motion in second to approve Ms. Emily Scarborough?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor by eye?
All right.
Opposed? All right, well, she's approved. Sure.
Because of the, the asset to the utility. I'd like to sit down and maybe in a couple of weeks, talk about looking at how their terms are. And after three years, your new responsibilities at the board member are. And that's to, to ensure that as they grow with the, the committee, they're learning more and more about the aspects of the utility overall, not just electric, not just water, not just sewer. And then each year, they graduate more responsibilities or assign to them. Maybe a five to seven year term or something, not for sure. So we can gain the biggest return on their service. I think it would be valuable for them to learn every aspect of the utility in order to be a tremendous asset to the city.
Thank you. Anything else? I hear no presentation, I'm not forgetting anything. That, no announcement, just today was a good day. And no citizen request? Can I get a motion to adjourn? Who motion first? Who motion first? I thought you said. Somebody motioned that, he's second. Well, he motioned first, give me a second, somebody.
Second.
Second, Ms. Cat. All in favor by eye?
All right.
Opposed?